All right. Good morning, everybody. This is Jonathan Niz, President of the Navajo Nation, coming to you from Windorot, your Navajo Nation capital, to begin our town hall meeting, giving you all updates on the efforts pushing back on COVID-19. We've seen some increase in cases all around the country. And of course, that means that there's an uptick in cases here on the Navajo Nation as well. But before we go into our updates, I'd like to have our Vice President Myron Lizer open us up in a word of prayer. Vice President?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning. I've been Vice President Lizer here. As we always do, we always open up in prayer. So today is no different. Real extreme need to get our matters out there and ask for lessons from our Creator. Yes, Shesha, dear God, we thank you, Lord, that you are God and we nation, our Father. We honor you this time. We ask your wisdom, Father, and your peace that surpasses all understanding, Lord, to be made available for our people all across the land. Lord, your people are hurting. Some are saving, some are needing recovery, some are needing strength. Father, we pray for you. Steer the blood of our God on the nation here, our people, Father God. We pray your blessings upon them, grace and mercy, Lord, and just healing and strength, Lord, to come upon all of our nation, for our people, Lord, as you eradicate this virus from our land. Thank you. We ask you be with our leadership here on this town hall update, Lord. Help us to receive the news, the updates, the knowledge, Lord, and apply it, Lord, with your wisdom, your great wisdom. Thank you again. Be with us in this time so that the people of the land will be blessed. Jesus name, my dear, Shesha, dear God. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Vice President, for the prayer. And again, good morning to everyone that is watching the updates on the COVID-19 pandemic efforts. Eli, we have you on audio. If you can mute yourself. They need to take a little leaning. A short, then he did. Then he came up. Who is the Washington? Now, that's it. I want to add, yeah. I don't think I asked that. I don't know. They need to take a nap. How does she get that? I don't know. Yeah, they go. Well, I'm not a player. Joe, I've been in that. Then they're clear. I'm not a player. So she ain't. Ain't. She never had a single. But again, I became a player. I'm done. I don't. That was. Do I? Don't be honest. I'm not a player. I, yeah. Don't she yet. But I'm not. Then it's great. So she ain't. You'll try to do. I'm not. And I didn't. The cost of the car. You know, I still. Oh, I tell you. Let me know. Don't be honest. So I'm trying to ask. See, she did. The cost of the car. He became. He not. Then he did. Need. I don't. He love. I love. I love. I love. Hand sanitizers. They need to love. I'm not. I don't. I should. Do it. He need. He not. It could only. I don't. I'm going to end. So I'm trying to come. They. Now, yeah. But when I was in the law. I don't. I call. I'm not. I'm not. I'm not. The more big. She not. I'm not. I'm sure. I'm happy. I'm happy. So she ain't. I'm happy. Refrigerators. Sweet. I don't. Then I don't. I can't. I don't. I'm not. I don't. I don't. Come. You can't. He didn't. That's all. She had. Do. It's. I don't. It's. So I be. I saw. I can't. I can't. Don't. He didn't. I'm bad. They. That I know. I don't. Yeah. Be. She can't. I shouldn't. I don't. I have to. I'm not. I have to. I can't. He didn't. I'm not. I don't. You don't. I'm not. Did the cost of the car.[604.89]
Cases yesterday. The safest place to be is at home, right? Isn't that what they say? Our elders. If you give satad. You know, our, our, where our water is at. Where our fire poker is at is the safest place to be. And so let's heed to our elders teaching. And we ask the Navajo people to continue to stay the course. And to be safe. To be safe. And I, I see some people that are on, and we want to say thank you to. Cindy from Glendale. I'm sure Cindy is following these protocols all the way in Glendale. As we're trying to create. Uh, our own safe place here on Navajo and, and Cindy, just be careful out there in, in Phoenix. Jonah is also on, on the web, on the WebEx today. Thank you for. Joining us Cardinals tonight, Thursday, right? Appreciate Jonah and, and Jonah's positive comments. But Dora Mitchell, thank you for, for being here and good morning to you as well. Uh, and my sister Wendy in Alaska with her boys Marcus and Ray Ray. Thanks for. For joining us and saw Alaska. Having some low numbers as well. In that state. But I, I just want to say too that. We're all in this together. I know there are probably visitors. Watching today's segment. We're all in this together. We just all begin to join. Forces following the protocols. We can. See some of these numbers. This, this COVID nineteen. Be defeated. And it's up to all of us. It's up to the Navajo people. It's all up to our friends and our neighbors. To stay the course. So take care of yourself. Yeah, I can't reiterate it. And, and please stay on. To listen to our Epi Team Jill Jim, Dr. Jill Jim. Uh, Captain Brian Johnson from the IHS. Del Yasi is going to have a, a presentation. To let you know that, you know, where these spreads are prevalent. And they're from social gatherings, family gatherings. Uh, church events, religious gatherings, traditional events. Family functions, birthday parties. You would think it's gonna, it, it would be high in the schools here on Navajo, but it's not. It's because of the school districts doing a great job. If someone comes. Uh, comes down with the virus at school, they isolate him and they go and get the contact tracers involved. And. Isolate quarantine the individual, the student, the family. And now that we have testing available. You can get tested and, you know. Get your results quicker. Used to take fourteen days. At least for Navajo government with ninety six. Percent of our employees fully vaccinated in.
Yes, can you hear me? President can't hear me? My wifi is kind of spinning. Everybody's spinning here. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Vice President, please continue.
Okay, alright, alright. Thank you. I'm not gonna put my video on, uh, my little, uh. Here spinning, but, uh, real quick, uh. No new news in the United States here on the virus, uh. Appreciate the ability that we're able to receive updates. I appreciate my staff, Adam McGave, were given. Uh, Arizona, uh, nineteen months into this pandemic, one million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-one. Six thousand, two hundred. So tremendous spiking, uh, in Arizona as a state at. There in Navajo County. And lastly, making up the tri-county area of our Navajo Nation in Arizona, Coconino County. Twenty-three thousand and ninety-one cases with sixty-five new cases here to report as of yesterday. Uh, so Colorado, as you know, we own ranches in Colorado, uh, seven hundred thirty-three thousand. Three hundred forty-three total statewide in Colorado with two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven new cases. This just gives us a glimpse at what the, the surrounding states look like around us. So again, Arizona having six thousand, two hundred ninety-nine. Colorado, three thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven new cases. New Mexico. Has nine hundred and fifty-nine new cases to report there. Uh, San Juan County Northwest New Mexico there, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six with seventy-seven new cases to report. And McKinley County there, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight with eighty-seven new cases to report there. Utah, our northern neighbors there. Five hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen with two thousand and sixty-eight new cases to report. Southeast corner of Utah, San Juan County, there's two thousand, four hundred and thirteen total cases, uh, nineteen months in. And our own Utah Navajo Health Systems there reporting one thousand, two hundred and thirty with, uh. No new cases to report there. So there you have it. Those are the numbers and what it looks like. And so in closing. As Vice President of the Navajo Nation, I do concur with our President Jonathan Nez. I appreciate his stellar leadership as we are. Uh, mitigating and combating this virus here in this pandemic. Uh, this disease caused by the SARS, uh, COVID-two coronavirus has no impact on some people and is seriously. Debilitating or fatal for others, you know, and I think that's where the whole question comes from, right? Uh, you know, how, how is this gonna affect you? Uh, but really extrapolate that out. How's it gonna affect? Those around you, your loved ones. And that's really what this has been about, you know, infected people without symptoms. Which include but are not limited to cough, fever, and difficulty breathing are capable of spreading the virus. And when you choose to get vaccinated, you're choosing protection, not only for yourself, but for your family, your teammates, your friends, your classmates, and. Your community, as we heard so eloquently from our president. Children ages twelve to seventeen years old are eligible to receive the COVID-nineteen vaccine. Yet there is only one health district with more than sixty percent of children who are fully vaccinated against COVID-nineteen. One health district has less than twenty percent of children fully vaccinated. Those are just the latest updates here as we peer around us. Lastly here, the United States economy lost twenty-two point four million jobs due to this pandemic. The recovery has been slower than many would have hoped, but according to recent data released by Wallet Hub. The progress has been steady and as we always felt like we could open up and recover safely on our own Navajo Nation. You know, uh, that's what we are, are posed up against there. So this is, uh, the great catch-up for our Navajo Nation. To be innovators, to be builders, to be building a stronger nation here. One of them here is fighting a pandemic, mitigating its effects. Become healthier, uh, choose healthier eating habits, uh, healthier lifestyles. And you could become a little bit stronger and increasing your ability for your own immune system to stave off this virus and. So those are some of the things that you can affect change immediately. And the others, of course, our president and our, our health professionals will talk about. It'd be to just, uh, continue to stay safe, you know, again, washing your hands. So I do see some people still wearing gloves out there. Again, you know, disposing of them properly. Uh, masking and also, you know, just, uh, exercising, social distancing. And, uh, you know, continue to be safe. They're cleaning all their common touch areas, you know. How many people are still really cleaning, sanitizing every common touch area? So those are the areas where. We feel like we can continue to stay safe. So this has been Vice President Lizer here. Good to be with you all. Again, we're all wanting the best. We'll work like it depends on us. Pray like it depends on our created God, which it does. So continued prayers from President Jonathan Nez and Vice President Myron Lizer to. Continue to pray for you all and our, all of our families here as we are all in this together. So. Thank you and God bless you and continue prayers for safety and protection. God bless. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring up Dr. Jill Jim. She's our Executive Director for our Navajo Department of Health. She has been. Doing a tremendous job in helping us to continue to, um. Be knowledgeable, to receive the latest updates and also just to. Continue to be safe. Therefore, that's all of our wishes. And she joins our prayers along with, uh, our, our president. And our office here for you all. And so, uh, I appreciate her and her leadership. So, um, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Jill Jim. Navajo Department of Health Executive Director. Take it away.
Thank you, Vice President, if you had none, um, for, um, the. The helpful tips that we all need reminders on. So, and also, you know, on the President Nez as well for. Um, coming on to the town hall every single week to address, um, the COVID-nineteen. Um, that we are still dealing with. This, um, has not gone away. We're. I'm hitting our second Halloween, um, being impacted with COVID-nineteen. So. Um, I have a PowerPoint up here, so I'll go over those slides on. So a lot of this, um. Reminders that we're, we were doing is we do a monthly, um, KTM forum and a lot of this was. Interpreted in Navajo last week, um, during the KTM forum. So just look out for those messages. Um, because that's where some, a lot of these are translated for our, um, grandpas and nulleys that are. Um, that speak mainly in Navajo, but I hope that those listening on today's town hall can help translate this and. Help inform people and, and relatives and especially our grandmas and our grandpas and our nulleys too. So. And as a reminder, Vice President and President did mention the three Ws, wear your mask, watch your distance. Uh, wash your hands as well and also sanitize, as he mentioned, it's still really important to, um, do that as well. Another thing is just, um, as a reminder, as I mentioned, that Halloween is, um, just around the corner this weekend. So make sure you wear your mask wherever you're going, um, and travel only as necessary because our numbers are. High. Yesterday we had a large amount of cases and Dell can cover that as well, but. Um, mask is still a mandate on the Navajo Nation. So wear it in the bus, wear it at school, um, wear it. Um, when you're visiting other households with family members at the grocery store, post office. So. Just as a reminder, as we know the importance that mask, wearing your mask and wear it and correct your mask correctly is important too. Um, as much as wearing maybe a more tightly fitted mask is gonna be important. And then, um, the Public Health Emergency Order twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty that was issued. Um, last week was in effect and it's, um, two items were important on there that. Um, we mentioned is basically the, um, the movie theaters are now allowed to operate at fifty percent and then. Um, that we have holiday guidelines that we issued for Halloween, all the holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's. All of those guidelines are, um, on the Navajo Department of Health website. But for Halloween, since it's an immediate holiday. Um, there are several options that you can do with, um, keeping social distancing in mind and reducing gathering. As participating in community virtual Halloween contests, board games, craft nights or pumpkin carving. With your family, hosting a Zoom party with friends and family. Um, with complete games and scary movies or, um, contests, um, costume contests. I know there's. People that have access to live streaming can do, watch parties, um, watching the same movie, um, doing a scary movie night. Watch your favorite fear-filled Halloween movie, Halloweening at home, share pictures of Halloween-themed costumes, decorations, food and social media. In-home trick-or-treating, allow your kids to go from one candy station to another through the house or your, our yard. Um, so get creative with that. A spooky cook, cook-off, wear your costume and become the costume or. During dinner. I mean, there's a lot of ways that you can still celebrate Halloween, scavenger hunt the house, create different themed rooms through. Out the house or yard and send kids on a scavenger hunt. Halloween karaoke, Halloween pinata are just things that you can do at home safely, uh, within your ho- own household as well. And, um, with a, um, gathering limit of fifteen or fewer individuals. So right now. Any regular classroom parties are really prohibited also in the new public health order. Um, so any sort of, um, um, activities around kids and Halloween, the only thing that I'll probably talk about is the trunk or treat. So, but, um, if you are gathering, um, it is, I'm making sure that you are. Um, fifteen or persons or fewer or fewer. And also if you're doing something outdoors, making sure you follow the outdoor recreational events. And then there's also the drive-through, um, guidelines where it allows fifty vehicles. So those are still allowed. And so just making. Um, sure those, um, protocols are in place when if you are planning a Halloween. Event. And I know one thing that we mentioned last week regarding the guidelines is if you're hosting. Something, make sure if you are sick or if you. Are hosting, do not host the event if you're sick and you want to attend the event, stay, um, stay home. So social distancing is definitely important, limiting contact. With people six, six feet from each other and then package individual, um, to-go treats can be distributed, um. And those are at the trunk or treat, um, event. So. That's where we're at with the Halloween event. So trunk or treat, uh, trunk or treat is available. And so. Making sure that, um, there are maintain, maintaining six feet distancing and also making sure there is clear foot trafficking. And making sure that, um, individual packaged, um, treats are provided at the end of the event. And so when you're thinking about, um, Halloween this, um, this year, I think one thing to always remember the timeline of. Incubation and, um, this is one from last year that I still pull up, but it's all, always really very relevant because. Once you go to a holiday party, um, sometimes you don't really see your symptoms till ten days later. Um, Jane here, she learned she was exposed to someone that was positive. And so there's definitions for close exposure, meaning fifteen minutes. Um, or less, um, and fifteen minutes or more, sorry, and three feet distancing. And so there's guidelines out there where contact tracers identify. Um, what that is and who you need to contact. So she probably. Um, was in close contact with someone. She gets tested and she's negative. Um, and so the, the current guidelines, um, require. You to get tested multiple times, the one right after. An exposure and then one a couple of days later to confirm. So even though you're doing multiple testing. Do that to ensure that there isn't any symptoms that are gonna come up later. So if she was gonna get tested again. Um, which she did ten days later until she, um, was exposed to that. So test come back negative. She goes around and about and, and things we say no, like, um, she goes shopping, she visits family thinking she's not. Infectious, but she is. So now she has exposed ten other people and. Her symptoms don't show up till day ten. So I think just the reality of moving around and about is very important and also. Um, if you have allergies or you have the regular flu, just make sure that. Um, you stay home as well. And then some people will not show any symptoms. So in those individuals, we, we define as asymptomatic. Someone not showing symptoms, but if they've been in close contact, they shouldn't be around others because they could have infect others and they can still carry the virus. So. Um, just to make sure if you are a younger, which in most cases are asymptomatic. And so symptoms may appear later and may not appear and very, maybe very minimal, um, but. Mainly just to understand that if you know that, um. You've been exposed to someone, just because you don't have symptoms doesn't mean you can't transmit. So just knowingly that. Um, that is, that is a high likely probability that you can infect others when you're not symptomatic. Um, so it's just. Important. And then that really goes back to not going to work when you're sick. And we've had a lot of workplace exposures for. The tribal government and schools as well. So people are still reporting to work when they're sick. And the, and this is one way that we can stop transmission. And our transmissions are really high right now. So if people are experiencing any sickness. They absolutely should just stay home. And that's where I think we're, um, really having issues with these exposures. And so. Um, asked. So that's all I want to say. And I don't know how else to say it because. Um, our numbers are going up and the more people that are sick, we don't know to the extent how many will need, will have severe illness or not. And so our hospitals around in New Mexico, Utah and. Arizona are gonna start and have been dealing with, um, people that have, um, do not have COVID. With delayed care. And so during this pandemic, we delayed a lot of our healthcare services. And now. We are getting admitted and we are now receiving services. At the same time, COVID numbers are starting to increase and you can just imagine. The long, um, time that we're experiencing with COVID, our physicians, our providers are burnt out. Um, so I think we all have an individual responsibility to make sure that we don't. Get infected. And we know that, um. We really need to take care of our, our healthcare providers on Navajo because there's not a lot of them. And so, and we, and they have been providing and responding to the pandemic for this long. So just. Be cognizant of that. And also be prepared. Um, if you do get COVID, have a plan in place. That means don't travel. Have others help you, have others feed your, add the animals that you have. Have others take care of your errands. And if you have children that are not exposed, um. Have someone else take care of them if you have that ability to do that. And if you don't feel safe, find. Um, a way to isolate either at a hotel or other, other places. The only hotel. Isolation services that are being provided right now is through the New Mexico sites. Uh, so in New Mexico, I know you can work with their healthcare provider. Where you get tested. If it's an Indian Health Service facility or a, another facility in New Mexico, there are so isolation services. Then lastly, I just want to know that we do have a reporting exposure. Anyone can report. Um, a school, a business, and they're all required to. So we can do immediate contact tracing and case investigations. So make sure you report to the Navajo Department of Health webpage. And there's a red button that says report exposure. So. Um, with that, I just want to end with, um, staying home is the safe place. And if you are traveling, make sure you are safe, um, safely practicing. Um, protocols. And then if you decide to trick or treat off the reservation, we're not saying no, but you shouldn't, um, just because we know kids don't have access to vaccines. And as I mentioned, a lot of our younger adults also can be asymptomatic and not known the difference. So. I just wanted to thank everyone for being on the call and I want to go ahead and, um, give it to Captain Johnson. He's with the Navajo Area Office and also a member with our Health Command Operations Center. So take it away, Captain Johnson.
Okay. Um, hello, everyone. Just wanted to make sure that, uh, you can hear me. I see I'm finally on. Hey, this is, uh, as, as Dr. Jim indicated, this is Captain Brian Johnson with Navajo. Area Indian Health Service. And I serve as the, uh, Acting Deputy Area Director. For Navajo Area Office there in St. Michael's. Just want to say hello today to. All the, uh, folks, uh, listening in. To today's town hall session. And I also want to take a moment. I, I, I always like to take a moment. And thank, uh, President Nez, Vice President Lizer, uh, Dr. Jim. And, um, Del Yazi as well. And oftentimes, Dr. Fowler, of course, is, is, is participates on. These town hall sessions. And, uh, all of these individuals have done an outstanding job, uh, just from my opinion over the last, uh, year and a half. And, um, it's just amazing the work that's been done and the continuing transparency. That, um, that we see, uh, continuing in, in, uh, reporting and providing information to. The, the Navajo people. Um, just wanted to make a few comments today. I wanted to reassure the Navajo people, uh, across Navajo Nation. And beyond that, uh, Indian Health Service, we, we continue certainly to work with our, our tribal and, and urban Indian, uh, organization partners. And, um, and, and some may say, well, exactly what does that mean in terms of working together? And. And that means, um, across, we, we look at the Navajo Nation, uh, from again, a bird's eye view where we try to understand. The healthcare system that is there. And, um, by working, all of our organizations working together, whether they're. A tribal health organization, whether it's the Navajo Nation Department of Health or Indian Health Service facilities. Or even private healthcare facilities that are on the Navajo Nation. We do. Work together and share information and, uh, have since the beginning of the pandemic. And, um, a lot of that has been led by, uh, Dr. Jill Jim as a direct, Executive Director of the Navajo Department of Health. And, uh, we do share information concerning, you know, case numbers and, uh, test positivity rates. And looking at our hospital capacities and doing our contact tracing activities. And just looking at, um, COVID-nineteen infections across the nation and. Understanding any patterns that are developing so that we can work together as a team to address. Uh, any issues that are going on out there. And, and, uh, I think these town halls have been a big part. Of transparency throughout the pandemic in terms of the activities that are going on. Um, who is covering what, uh, actions. And again, that, that has been an outstanding way to get the message out to, uh, individuals across. Navajo. Um, certainly it's, it's been a difficult year and a, year and a half. I mean, uh, not too long from now, we would be reaching a two-year mark. So. Good solid year and a half. And, uh, we're certainly grateful for the partnership that we've had with, uh, Navajo Nation leadership. I know that we've been in, um, in direct conversations and in meetings and, and, uh, I know that COVID has. Has in some times, uh, kept us apart. And so we've used virtual means of, of communicating and we continue to do that in a responsible way. But, um, we have, uh, been in contact, uh, continuously. With, uh, Navajo Nation leadership, including the Office of President and Vice President and many of Navajo. Uh, uh, Nation Council, uh, delegates who have also reached out over time, uh, to inquire about very specific items. Or assistance on various issues. And we do thank you for your continued, uh, participation, interest and leadership. Uh, on the COVID-nineteen issue. And, um, so, so we'll continue to do that. Uh, we, we certainly will continue to monitor. And make sure we're working together as a team. Um, I just wanted to mention a few things in terms of vaccines and vaccine boosters and some other items. But, uh, to date, when we look at the, um, Native American healthcare system across the United States, we talk about Indian country. There has been over one point seven million doses of, uh, vaccine, uh. Uh, provided across, uh, the United States. That's, that's a tremendous amount of, of vaccine that's been provided. And we're certainly excited, uh, to, to be a part of that. And, and when we look nationally, over fifty-three percent of American Indian, Alaska Native adult patients are fully vaccinated. And, uh, we've heard some statistics here and you'll hear some more momentarily from, um, Del Yazi with the Navajo Nation Epi Center today. But, um, we do know that the Navajo Nation has excelled. And, uh, in terms of, uh, by comparison, in terms of vaccinations, COVID-nineteen vaccinations here locally. And, um, will continue to advocate and encourage. And we'll continue to advocate and encourage that 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 activity continue, of course, as we know that the vaccines are the safest and most effective way to prevent COVID-19, including the most serious consequences of the disease. So we know that the vaccines not only help prevent infections, but for any individuals who who do still get the infection, we know that it reduces the consequences of those infections and hopefully does help limit hospitalizations and of course deaths as well. So we are we are extremely focused with Indian Health Service and also our partnership on the Navajo Nation of staying ahead of the virus and making sure that we have optimal protection against COVID-19 infection, severe illness and death, and we're going to continue to do that. And I just want to make the comment that I know there's a lot of information out there, and I'll I'll talk a little bit more here, a little bit about misinformation. But it's very critical in these situations that you'll you'll hear the term following the science. And that's exactly what we've been doing in the Indian Health Service. And I know in conjunction with the Navajo Nation, it's following the science. We look at the research, we look at the numbers that are factual, and that's how decisions are made. We don't base it on loose information or unofficial information or unofficial data. We simply follow the science. I know that there's been a lot of interest over time about vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine, the booster shots. And we know that the FDA recently authorized booster doses for COVID-19 for vaccines for Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. And the FDA had previously authorized booster doses for the Pfizer vaccine as well. The latest information and authorization also allows the option of healthcare providers to mix and match booster doses of the Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. And so following the FDA's action, the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices unanimously recommended the administration of vaccine boosters for certain individuals. And the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control Director, has accepted those recommendations. So basically, that was a lot to said, but it's basically looking at the the vaccines that have been authorized for use and approved for boosters through the FDA and the CDC. And we continue to encourage folks who are eligible for booster shots to take advantage of that. And we do anticipate that the CDC will publish revised clinical considerations for the use of COVID vaccines based on these recommendations. And the guidance, some guidance was recently issued by the Centers for Disease Control. Also, just want to make sure that we talk a little bit about, you know, in terms of the boosters that are now authorized for all people 18 years and older who received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine at least two months ago. And for individuals who, a single COVID-19 vaccine booster dose is also recommended for certain individuals who received two doses of Pfizer and Moderna vaccine at least six months ago. So these are all important things to be aware of, but I know it can be confusing at times. And so what I recommend is if if you haven't heard or received any information and if you've had the two boosters dose or the the two vaccine dose series from Moderna and Pfizer, and you have questions about a booster shot and whether or not you should have that, certainly reach out to your local healthcare provider and inquire as to your eligibility for that locally. And then also, for those who received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine at least two months ago, also reach out and inquire about that as well, the booster shot for yourself. So I also just wanted to, you mentioned that the FDA and CDC have really studied the booster shots, and and they found that they're safe and effective and that they do provide protection based on the latest data and evidence. So after thorough and independent transparent review process, so there has been a number of scientists and folks in the research of the booster shots and have found that they are safe and effective, and they continue again to follow the science based on this. So that's that's very critical for the public to understand. So the FDA and CDC will continue to to look at the data as it is available to determine whether and when groups of people should become eligible for boosters. So there are different stages for individuals who who will become eligible for booster shots. And again, that's why I recommend reaching out to your local health facility. You'll need to be able to provide them information on the specific manufacturer of a vaccine that that you received. So for example, if you received a Pfizer two-dose series, that's what they would need to know. And if you received Moderna two-dose series or if you had previously received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, then they would need to know that in order to help you with the determination on your booster eligibility. So also wanted to mention, we know that there have been approvals for individuals 12 years and older over time. It initially was didn't include the 12-year-olds, that 15 to the 15-year-old group. But over time, we we do know that those were vaccines were approved for those age groups. And now, last month, in terms of the five to 11-year-old age group, Pfizer has announced its plan to submit its data for COVID-19 vaccine for the five to 11-year-olds before winter. And the FDA is actually currently looking at the safety of the vaccine and reviewing the data to ensure the the benefits of the vaccine for school-aged children outweigh the risks. So that is actually happening right now for the five to 11-year-old age group. And we'll continue to share information here as that process unfolds. And of course, that information can also be looked at on the CDC website. That that is available online. And again, making sure that we only use those reputable websites in order to understand COVID-19 and the various activities that are going on. And we know that many parents have expressed eagerness for their younger children to be eligible for vaccines. And so they want to reduce the chances of virus spreading to their households. While we understand this, that the FDA and the CDC must make sure the COVID-19 vaccine meets all the safety standards. So I I just would want to mention that we remain patient for the five to 11-year-old age group. And we should know something fairly soon as the safety is really being looked at and making sure that that's safe. And whenever we start talking about this, whenever we do receive more information about the the START, we'll say, the Pediatric Vaccination Program, it's all going to depend on the independent FDA and CDC process and timeline. However, I just want to make sure that folks understand that the planning efforts that are already underway mean that the healthcare team is ready to begin vaccinations in the days following any final CDC recommendation for the five to 11-year-old age group. So again, we'll be we'll be monitoring that closely. And we know that the current administration has stated that it's secured ample vaccine supply for our nation's children. So if there's any questions out there about the supply of vaccine and concerns about that, we do know that from the from the very top that we're hearing that we have ample vaccine supplies. Should the five to 11-year-old age groups be fully approved, then certainly that that vaccine will be distributed. And then basically, millions of doses will be shipped out nationwide to states, tribes, and territories. And the Indian Health Service, they're certainly working to ensure that doses are distributed efficiently and equitably across the various jurisdictions. So I think that's, we're in an exciting time right now. And hopefully, we'll be hearing more about the five to 11-year-old age group in the days to come. And we're going to continue working with our tribal partners certainly to make sure that as this rolls out, we're sharing information on this venue as well as in other venues as well on Navajo Nation. And we're wanting to make sure also that one of the key target populations, of course, when we talk about the five to 11-year-old age groups is our parents. Of course, we want our parents to be well-informed and engage in 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 decision-making for their children. And so there will be much information that will be shared. The Department of Health and Human Services will conduct national public education campaigns to reach out to parents and guardians with information about the vaccine and the risks that COVID-19 poses to children. So again, that information will be provided again in a transparent way so that parents will be able to make their decisions based on on that data. I also wanted to mention real quick that in terms of COVID-19 testing, we've heard here earlier about the the positivity rate and the number of cases here that was reported earlier today. Yesterday was, you know, over 100 cases. And so that's that's, again, we're seeing this uptick in cases. So it's important that individuals understand that testing still remains available at all IHS and tribal health organization healthcare facilities on the Navajo Nation. We do recommend that if you have any concerns about symptoms that you may have or if you're if you think you're dealing with allergies, but you're not sure, or if you believe that you've been directly exposed, that you do get tested and that those services will continue to be available. Just want to reassure you of that. Also, wanted to mention again, I earlier on, I mentioned the importance of utilizing only reputable information sources during this time of COVID-19. We've mentioned it here on this town hall on a number of occasions about misinformation and what that can lead to. And there is a lot of misinformation that has been shared out in the public. It's not based on fact. Oftentimes, it it's dealing with myths that we have to end up dispelling. And so please make sure that when you're looking at information, when you're receiving information, that it's it's you're looking at accurate information. Be sure to check before you share that or send that on through a text message or through social media or otherwise. We've just been exposed to a great deal of information in social media, the news, public health guidance and 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 various rumors. And while while information has helped us to stay safe throughout the pandemic, it it has times led to confusion, and we don't want that for our Navajo Nation people. We want people to have the accurate information so that they can make the wisest decisions for themselves and their families. So again, I certainly recommend using the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention website. You can type in cdc.gov. And that information is definitely based on fact and based on science and certainly has a lot of information on symptoms, on treatment, on schools and quarantine and travel and other important topics. So again, cdc.gov, and you can just put in the search engine COVID-19, and it'll get you in the right place if you're using the internet for information for COVID-19. I also just wanted to end by talking about flu vaccine. While it's easy to get caught up and focused on COVID-19, we also have to remember it's that time of year for our annual flu vaccines. If you haven't had a vaccination yet, that's something also that the local healthcare facilities have throughout Navajo Nation. And we certainly want to stress the importance of flu vaccines as we enter the flu season and wanting to reduce the overall burden of respiratory illness, which is critical to also protecting our population at risk. So please reach out and make sure you and your loved ones are getting vaccinated for the flu. Very important for our families locally. And on a final note, I know that Dr. Jim touched on it earlier, and I I want to echo those comments. You know, when I look across the Navajo Nation and I look at the healthcare teams that have been working so diligently on COVID-19 and many other healthcare aspects for the last year and a half, we do see that and we do hear that the team members are, they continue to be exhausted. They're doing what they can to to find time to take for themselves. And we certainly support that. But we also know that right now staffing, healthcare staffing, is quite challenging at this point in time in the COVID-19 pandemic. And so it's it requires a lot of ask for the healthcare team to step up and and work oftentimes longer and harder. And despite the fact that they've been fighting this disease for over a year and a half. And I want folks to understand that and and understand that this is why it's so important to get our family members vaccinated, our friends vaccinated, ourselves vaccinated, because we know that it's the best tool in our toolbox to stop this disease. And we just need to support our healthcare team. They're supporting us, and in turn, we should support them. And so I also want to just ask that if you have the time, if you can take some time when you're out in the community, please say a kind word to our healthcare team members, whether it's nursing, whether it's the doctors, whether it's a housekeeper or others who work in the business side of the hospitals or health clinics, please take time to say an encouraging word to them to uplift their spirits because we know that this has been an extremely long battle. And I can tell you, they very much appreciate hearing from community members and hearing positive comments and encouraging words. I I do promise you, they do they do look for that, and they do take that seriously. So any support that can be provided in that manner is much appreciated. And we'll continue this to fight the good fight against this disease. So so let's continue to reach out and 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 let's reach community immunity. Let's protect ourselves, protect our families, and protect our elders. And please get vaccinated for COVID-19. And at this point in time, going to turn the mic over to Mr. Del Yasi with the Navajo Nation EpiCenter, and he has some information to share for us as well. Del, you have the mic when when you're ready.
Captain Johnson, thank you. Uh, hello, Yate, she Kero, she's in there. Thank you all for for tuning in. My name is Del. I am with the Navajo Epidemiology Center and our COVID Epidemiology Team, a team member. And I will be providing an update on our latest numbers as far as our gating measures over a two-week time period from October 7th through October 21st. So before I begin, I, some of you have probably seen this slide. But those of you who are new to the call, I want to acknowledge our Epidemiology Team for COVID Disease Surveillance on Navajo Nation. We are a large epidemiology team made up of team members representing these programs or organizations, our Navajo EpiCenter, IHS, the Navajo Area IHS, the 638 Facilities, tribal health organizations. We have folks helping us from the CDC and the CDC Foundation, also from Hopkins and Cope and TGen from the Flagstaff Office or campus, who they're helping us with the the sequencing or the strain surveillance on Navajo Nation. And also, of course, our state partners from Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. We're all partnering to provide the numbers I'm going to show here. So President Nez has already showed this, but I'll go over it really quickly. Recent cases and trends over a 60-day time period. As you can see, the bars here have increased over time, including our the the red line, the nine-day weighted center moving average has gone up. Really, I'd like to identify this bar here is October 2nd. So really, throughout the the month of October, we've seen an increase in cases up to our last reporting period, which is October 21st, which is last Thursday. So we'll be updating the numbers next week. But for now, Um, but for now, we are, uh, seeing an increase in cases across Navajo Nation. Our infection rate over a seven-day period is at 1.07, and it remains about the same as the last reporting period. Uh, this is geographically and, you know, spatially on Navajo Nation, the COVID situation, um, here on the map is, uh, you know, the IHS service areas, including our bordering states, um, all in red with their incident, seven-day incidence rate of over 100 cases plus, um, per 100,000 people. So, that's, uh, a, the red, the red level, um, and only Winslow here, the Winslow service area is in a lighter shade brown here for 50 to 99 cases per 100,000. Um, but overall, we are seeing, um, cases throughout the Navajo Nation, um, including our bordering states. So, over a seven-day period, there were 548 new cases from October 15th through October 21st, so which puts our incidence, uh, rate at 346 cases per 100,000 people, uh, which is in our, the red, um, level of our gating matrix. Some additional metrics that we look at is the test capacity. Um, our seven-day test positivity rate is at 14.4%. Um, it did go up just a little bit from 14%. Um, our last reporting period, we are over a seven-day period, there are about 1,000 tests being conducted every day for seven days. Um, and this, the testing, there's a lot of testing going on, um, across Navajo Nation. Hospital capacity remains, uh, pretty stable within, you know, 60, uh, percentile, 66% for regular hospital beds as far as average daily occupancy, and then ICU beds at 68% um, average daily occupancy. Uh, we are contact tracers to daily case ratios at one, our threshold for this is five, so we are way below five. So, we are trying to, um, hire and bring on additional contact tracers, um, across the Navajo Nation. So, I know IHS, the Navo Area IHS is currently, I believe, has 17 contact tracer positions. So, uh, as Captain Johnson mentioned, you know, they're, so they're currently hiring, uh, if you can, I don't know, reach out to some of our Navajo people who are interested in being a contact tracer on Navajo Nation, please contact the, the Navo Area Office, um, in St. Michael's, uh, next to, you know, Winderock. So, uh, this is our, the latest numbers for vaccine across Navajo Nation. It's residents only, um, people who, you know, live on the nation. Um, there are 105,692, uh, Navo Nation residents that are fully vaccinated. And so, that's, uh, uh, the eligible residence age, uh, you know, eligible for vaccination, ages 12 years and older is that. So, we're, I know President Nen has mentioned this, we're at about 70% of our Navo Nation residents, uh, people, um, 70% vaccinated. And, but this total population of all ages, zero on up, we're at 57%. This, uh, President Nen has also showed this, we are, you know, comparing Navo Nation in the orange, uh, line here, uh, to the US, the, the darker blue color here. The US, you know, is seeing less cases across the country. However, Navo Nation, we are seeing, uh, uh, an increase in cases, especially throughout, you know, the month of, uh, October. This is also a seven-day incidence bar chart that we generate, um, over a seven-day period from October 15th through the 21st. The yellow line is Navo Nation. We did trend the wrong way. We went up about, uh, I'd say like 20 spots. We were down here before, uh, the last reporting period, and we jumped to number eight position here. Um, and also our bordering states, especially Colorado and Utah, are, have also seen increasing cases. So, we're all, I think essentially in the top 10 with, uh, Colorado and Utah, uh, in comparison to, um, the US. This is, uh, the strain surveillance as a report 25, which is October 20th, which is last week, uh, last Wednesday. Um, hopefully they will update this, um, soon, but the only change here is the Delta variant from report 24 to 25, it went from 568 to 621. I think that's like 50, 50-plus cases that were identified as a, the new Delta variant, but the rest of the variants and the numbers here remain the same from report 24 to 25. So, Delta variant is really the, the dominant variant on the Navajo Nation, very similar to the US. This is across the US, uh, according to CDC, the orange bars here is all Delta variant, making up about 99.5% of all variants. So, the Delta variant is really the, the dominant, uh, variant, um, even, uh, across the US. This is a seven-day case rate, um, across the US, within our region, the four corners, and, you know, southwest area, our bordering states, Utah, Colorado, New Mexico, really are, have seen an increase in cases over a seven-day period. This is community transmission, again, across the US, you see mostly red, um, even within our region, the, all the counties, I don't know if you can see the counties here, the counties within Navajo Nation are all red, meaning there's high COVID transmission. This is our high-risk, uh, chapter list, um, and the, the incidence rate of, um, greater than or equal to 100 cases per 100,000 people is the, the threshold that puts a chapter in a high-risk, uh, chapter list over a two-week period. So, this green, green, um, columns here are the, the, the new chapters that made the list for this reporting period. There are 48 chapters that made the list. And over time, uh, some people wanted to see the trend, like which chapters are consistently on this list. You go back to six weeks, back to September 10th, uh, these 13 chapters have been on the high-risk, uh, chapter list on a consistent basis for at least six weeks. So, you know, I, I like to mention that these chapters, uh, most, I think most of these chapters are, are on the bigger chapters, or one of the bigger chapters are based on, you know, population size. And so, they're, and also where they're geographically located on the nation, they're along like, um, kind of high-traffic areas or throughways to get from one part of the rez to the other are some of these chapters. Some of them, like Upper Fruitland, are next to a border town like Farmington. So, these are the, the 13 chapters that have been on the list, um, consistently for at least six weeks. And then, uh, the high-risk, uh, level assessment here, recommendation, we remain high, uh, red threshold, Delta variant may be the, the, the likely, uh, source for driving the, the cases currently. Our test positivity remains high at 14.4%, uh, hospital capacity remains stable based on our, our, the numbers that we, the facilities report to us. Um, and the main drivers of transmission is mainly family gatherings. People gather for different occasions and some people coming from off the nation to visit family on the nation. Sometimes those are ways, uh, m- one of the main ways of, um, folks, uh, getting COVID. Um, and so, and also there's, uh, some cases, you know, in schools and also some workplaces and, and some, uh, um, some of those, uh, areas are where we're seeing most of the cases, but it's mostly family gatherings. Last, uh, we remain in the red level based according to our gating matrix, um, that we follow for, for Navo Nation. So, um, this is my last slide, and I believe I'm the last presenter, so, um, if I am, I see Vice President still on the call, I don't know if he wants to make some last comments, but, um, if not, I'm the last presenter, so, uh, that's our, those are our latest not gating measures and numbers for, for Navo Nation. And I'll stop here and thank you all for, for joining our, uh, the town hall. Thank you. I'll go on in.